I'll diagnose your foot for you.
I'm sure the rest of the group is just really enjoying our conversation.
Okay, everybody. We do have a forum. So I'd like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for January. What day are we on here?
Twenty first.
The twenty first. Okay, so are there any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Yes, we received an email from Shira Fernandez and Gina Gifford regarding the public hearing and we got updated plan with the parking calculations. That's it.
So now we have the minutes. We have the minutes from January seventh. I've read them and they seem to be in order. Of course, at the end are all the are all the SDR agreements, but if anybody else has read them and has no questions, then I think we should adopt them as so written.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under Communications and Announcements, we have the memo for myself regarding critical environment areas, which we will get to at the end of the meeting. And the next is the local law, the new local law number one, two thousand and twenty-one, which is chapter two eighty fill and grading from the supervisor of McKenna and the town board. And I know that Stuart had some questions right away about it. So Stuart, if you want to address that, we could do it now.
Okay, well, at first read, I think that the draft of the proposed law needs clarification as to the role of the planning board versus the role of the building department when you're faced with a request for an excavation permit that's connected to, say, a site plan and issue that is before us and within our jurisdiction. It's not clear to me what the intention of the law is as to who issues the permit then, what is our role as approving authority and so on. I do think that the proposed draft needs to be revised to clarify those issues. I sent an email around to the planning board members about it, and I have no problem with having that conveyed to the town board in whatever fashion the board wants to do.
Any other board members want to add to that that have read it?
I read it, but I can't say that I spent enough time with it to sort it out. It is not very transparent.
Okay, so does everybody feel that we should just forward Stuart's response to the town board as it is?
Yeah.
That would make the most sense to me. There's no, there's no need to rewrite it. Just put, give the points, give the email itself to Bill and to the town board and raise those issues with them. They'll have to take them up with whoever they're using to draft the law. Because we will need clarity on it before they adopt it.
Okay, Melissa, is that something?
Yep, I will. I will send that email probably Monday morning.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have an email, as Melissa said, from Ricky Filer regarding the fifteen Rock City Road, which is coming up and they can express their feelings then. We're a couple of minutes early for the public hearing. We have one public hearing and three sketch plan reviews tonight. And I'll go ahead and introduce the first public hearing, which is fifteen Rock City Road LLC special use permit twenty dash zero three, 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 A. And it's a virtual public hearing for a site plan review application for site plan modification to convert an existing retail space into a restaurant located in the HC zoning district at fifteen Rock City Road in Woodstock. And it's represented by Konstantin.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, so I gotta wait a couple of seconds here before we open the public hearing. So I just want to ask if all the board members have seen all the updated plans, because there've been a few that came in over the last few days showing parking and so on. So has everybody had a chance to see those plans? Pretty much?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Got the map up with the wetlands showing.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing.
So Woodstock.
Excuse me? I'll make a motion to open the public hearing?
I move that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so would Konstantin want to explain to the board what they're proposing to do?
Okay. This is an existing structure in Hamlet District. It's renovation mostly of the interior to become a restaurant. We are adding an exterior pavilion. It's a freestanding pavilion slab on grade concrete where they could serve fifty-two people outside covered in the rain. The rest of the space will be retrofitted for banquet seating, you know, for diners, a new bar. And then we have an extension off the back of the of the building that has the new kitchen. New grease trap. We're installing two new septic tanks per the town of Woodstock engineer. Walk-in refrigerator and then the the second floor is just some new seating, no change related to the second floor.
Okay, so questions from board members? Any board members have questions for Konstantin at this point? I know Stuart had a question.
I have a couple of questions. In terms of the the slab on the grade concrete construction, does that create any drainage issues that need to be taken up in terms of stormwater hitting the you know, the hard surface and draining?
Right, it's a covered, right, sure. We're gonna pitch, we're gonna pitch a quarter inch per foot, but there's a roof over the, there's a roof over the covered dining. So it's a metal standing roof so they could serve outside in the rain. But we are, we will pitch the slab quarter inch per foot to, you know, any water that does get on there will slowly, you know, get pitched.
But where does it end up? That's really the question. Does it end up in the wetland behind your property or where is it taken up?
Oh, it's, it's, the drains, we're gonna run to daylight, basically, daylight drains. You know, they go into the, the gutters.
On the parcel?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and in terms of the two new septics, the drawing showed on the northeast corner that they're located under parking areas. So my lay understanding is that was always a no-no because of the weight of cars going over septics. So can you address that?
Yes, well, the, we have an engineer, John Steinmeier, who's been working with the town engineer on septic. So the current septic is in that location right there, but it's, it's not adequate because it was a thousand gallon tank. So the engineer has now specified two fifteen hundred gallon tanks, but the design of those is, allows for vehicular traffic. The design of that septic tank, as far as I know, septics is allowed to be there. And then the grease trap that they're gonna use will end up, you know, our new kitchen extension has a crawl space. The grease trap will be in the crawl space. And then, then it connects to the two septics, but we, we, we had, we had our first planning board meeting. The next day, we spoke with the, I forget his name, he was from Woodstock Town and Sewer.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, he was very helpful. And he said that, you know, the existing use, you know, the septic wasn't adequate. So then we worked with the engineer, our engineer spoke with his engineer. And then they came to the conclusion that two new fifteen hundred gallon septic tanks suffice with the number of seating that the owners are adding to the restaurant. But yeah, those will be under a car, but as far as I know, those are designed to be driven over.
Peter, if I can ask, this is Stuart again. If I can ask a question of Peter or anyone else who knows the answer, does the town engineer pass on the ability of the new tanks to withstand the weight from above?
I don't know. Well, it's really Larry, it's his call as to what type of tanks are installed. I don't know specifically if we've ever had the town engineer get involved in that, but.
As far as I know, the John Steinmeier, local structural engineer, and he's a structural engineer for this project, but he also designs septic systems. So he's been communicating with, with the town engineer on the size of the septics and location. And I pretty much remember our conversation last week, he knows that they'll be, you know, in an area, he located these on the site plan. You know, I just kind of showed them on my plan, but he's got a more of an engineering plan. But I think everyone knows the location that there'll be some employee parking there on top of them.
I'm sorry, so if this is rated to carry vehicular traffic, do you know what the weight limit is? I mean, it's, if I'm looking at the map, it looks like this is a gravel parking lot. Is that the case?
Yes, gravel, yeah.
Okay, and you know, for example, I'm trying, I think it's H twenty is a bit, is a vehicle with loading of eight thousand pounds or thirty-two thousand pounds, up to thirty-two thousand pounds. Can, can that, do you know for a fact these septic tanks can handle, say, I don't know, the weight of your delivery vehicles?
Personally, I don't know, but our engineer, John Steinmeier, who specified the actual tanks, he would, he would know that specific information, but he's one who was, you know, he was hired by us to, to design the septic and the structure. So I don't know the specifics of the weight, but I can definitely find out for you.
Okay.
Stuart, is there something that you would like to get confirmed by?
My, my preference would be to have the specs and plan for those septics reviewed by the town engineer and have the town engineer tell us that it meets with his approval in terms of this issue.
I mean, I can only tell you that I know we've done it many times before in parking lots, you know. Recently, we've done that, so.
Yeah, it shouldn't be hard for him to come and tell us, the town engineer.
If anybody wants the plans up, I've got them, but I have to share screen. I don't have permission at this point.
Hi, this is Craig, one of the owners of the project. I know John is working very closely with the town to make sure that we have the correct specs for everything in there. There's no way that he would approve us to put something in there that would not facilitate our needs and the town's needs. So I think the town engineer is familiar with what's going on as well as the sewer and water people. They, they, they want to tell us to put something in there that's not sufficient for its use.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Leonard, but just as a matter of process, I would feel more comfortable just having our town engineer sign off on that piece.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Okay, sure, we could do that. And Larry too, we could get a note from Larry also.
I think we were expecting that.
So any other questions from board members? Now, I know we have some emails that came in from neighbors. If they're here, they can ask their questions.
There was a question about wetlands, and I don't know if drywells or whatever you're planning to use will settle that. I do have the map up, but I'd have to have the share screen to be able to show you.
Shared screen is always on, Judy. You should be able to turn on.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so as I said, there were some questions from the neighbors. If they want to ask their questions of the applicant, we can entertain those questions.
I'm one of the neighbors, Mira, from the Woodstock Film Festival. Can I ask now?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, we're right next door and I'm very happy that there's gonna be a restaurant there. What kind of restaurant is it, is it going to be? Can we?
Sure, it's, we currently are the owners of Sylvia Restaurant.
Right.
So it's gonna be, I mean, we haven't finalized our menu, but it's gonna be similar farm-to-table, local produce, you know, similar, similar type, what we already do, just more extensions of it. We're hoping to do more takeout business and hopefully have it also a slightly lower price point.
Okay, that's good. The outdoor sitting area that you mentioned, I think you said that it will be, it could sit fifty-two people. Is that, is that where the slab is now, where the bench is close to our building?
No, it's right, it's right behind the, the structure.
So it's where the parking lot is now?
It's where the parking lot is now.
Oh.
Back of the structure.
Where the parking lot is now, there will be actually an extension to the restaurant where people can sit.
Yeah, right in the back of the building, yes.
So there's not gonna be parking lot anymore for the actual restaurant?
No, no parking lot.
Okay, all right.
No, there's gonna be a small parking area close to your building at the end. We're gonna have a handicap parking of two spaces.
Okay.
Right at the end of where our entrance now, which abuts to you, goes, there will be some handicap parking there, but that's the only parking of two spaces on the space that will be used really by the public.
When do you expect construction to start and how long do you think it will?
Well, hopefully it'll start end of February, sometime in February, if things go well. And my guess is it's a five, six-month project, but, you know, it's hard to tell, but it's probably in that ballpark.
Wow, okay. I think I had a couple more questions. Just let me just. Oh, yes, so, so this is gonna be farm-to-table. And I don't know, and please forgive me for asking that. Regarding cooking orders, I mean, I feel like it smells like a meat from restaurants. I assume that you have plans that you deal with that so that it doesn't, so that neighboring buildings and neighbors just at large do not then?
We've never had a problem, I mean, with our current restaurant. Most of the time, people are smelling stuff. They really like the smell. You know, the only thing that could smell bad would be rotting food. And we have plans to take care of that, where it actually doesn't stay on the property. That gets taken away.
Okay, I mean, I was actually referring to oily smells because I personally cannot stand it, but that's just me. And I think, well, my last question is, is, so what kind of, I mean, is this a daytime and evening or just evening? When will you, when, what hours will you keep?
The, it'll probably be a five to ten type thing. Dinner service only.
Okay, okay, sounds great. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mira.
Hello, this is Ricky Filer.
Hello. From the public.
Hello.
Hi, Ricky, I hear you.
Okay, my question is around, is about sound. I live across the street. Is there gonna be any limitation on the sound, like music? How loud it can be and hours, hours that it can be played? Because lately, the, it, it seems like in that area, the sound limitations haven't been adhered to. That's my question.
I don't think you're gonna hear much sound from the space. We're certainly not having live music or or bands or anything like that. There would just, you know, be some gentle background music for ambiance of a restaurant. So this, you know, certainly nothing like what goes on at the colony across the street where they have live music.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, my name is Shira Fernandez. Let me see, I want to get my questions up here. Okay, we are back, we're on Mountain View Avenue, our property. And so and I do want to start also saying that I'm glad, I'm excited that something's coming here. I know it looked like I wrote a lot of things, you know, but I'm not a professional, you know, I don't know. You know, if there's, if there's things implicit in this and I asked the wrong questions, I apologize, but the one thing I was, I went off of the paperwork that I got and there's a set of paperwork called the, the environmental assessment form. And it asks about the adjoining properties and the box was checked that said it was commercial, commercial. And I'm just here to say that we're not commercial and you do back up to a neighborhood. And another colony also kind of did that. I don't know. But we're a neighborhood still. We have a nice little neighborhood here and we hope to be good neighbors, but I just wanted to point that out. I think that's important with the whole thing. The wetlands, I heard Judith mention the wetlands. I don't know that they're state designated wetlands. I don't know, that's, but I just wanted to make sure that the planning board checked on that to make sure, because I know when I wanted to have something done, the town told me I couldn't do what I needed to do because it was wetlands, so.
It is state designated wetlands, according to my information.
All right, so. I, okay, thank you.
So I can address that a little bit for you if you wish. The existing building and parking lot has been there for over five years, been there for a long time. So those are existing conditions and they're not an infringement on the wetland at this point. There's no further expansion being going on.
I understand about the expansion, but I, I just, you know, restaurants, we talked about the cement slab going in and the roof coming off. That takes up some of the absorption that would normally happen with the rainwater and things off, you know, things that go run out. I'm just, just putting that out there. I know a lot of the restaurants hose down stuff and dump, dump buckets and, you know, it's probably a small thing in the scope of the world, but.
We would never do something.
It's a different use. That's all I'm pointing out. Good, good, okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to make any of this a hard time, sorry.
No, that's fine. It perfectly makes sense that you ask these questions.
Thank you. There was a part that asked about, you know, the traffic impacts and pedestrian traffic was the one I wanted to address. And you guys are, you know, I guess I haven't been to these meetings, but you know, the building sits right on the road, so the crosswalk there is rather awkward. You know, people are sort of directed, if you're coming from the Mountain View lot, to come out, go across the street because there's no sidewalk by you and come back around. I just think that that's an unsafe thing as it exists. So again, I just, you know, hopefully, you know, I don't know how you're gonna.
That's an existing condition that really.
It is an existing condition, but the traffic would be, the foot traffic would be different. That's all I'm saying. It is true. It's an existing condition.
Well, that's also, you know, our cost, you know, our clientele can also enter, they probably won't have to go across the road. They will just come across the small bridge and walk into our space from behind. They don't have to come through the front door.
Yeah, okay, that's great. As long as it's clear to them that they can, it would seem to be safer. That sounds great.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have some signage that mentions that, just to, and maybe a little pathway there just to sort of lead them from the parking lot directly to the building.
Thank you. The music also, I guess it was just asked, so you're not doing any outside music, so that's.
No, you know, there'll be, as I say, there'll just be sort of ambient music.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's fine. It's just, we're sort of, it's an odd acoustic here in this little area, so great, that's excellent. Lighting is another thing, since we're right behind you. I don't know if the lights are gonna be on, you know, do you turn off most of your lights at tenant when you close, so they're staying on, just keeping in mind.
We're actually taking lighting away that's exist, there's more lighting there now than probably what we're gonna have. And we, you know, they have these big floodlights there right now, which will be going away. Yeah, no, we won't leave the lights on all night. Once it's, once we close, the lights, we will turn the lights off.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, there's a, just as an example, and the reason I ask, there's a string of bright, bright lights on another build, you know, in another area that they just leave them all on all night. So thank you.
Sure.
And then the thing has to do with the trees that are shown on that, like plot plan. I was wondering, are those the existing ones? Are you guys putting more in, taking any out?
We won't be taking any out. We'll leave all the existing ones. We will add a few trees in a couple of different places. I know one is at the front of the building to beautify the front at one side. And we're looking to do some landscaping in the back, which maybe add a few small trees and plants and grass.
Yeah, I'm all for you adding, not subtracting.
Well, we're not, we're not gonna cut all those trees down. We like the trees.
Excellent. Okay, great, and good luck. This, that's really my concerns.
Again, it's Ricky.
If I can make an observation?
Ricky, it's Ricky Filer.
Yes, go ahead.
If I can make an observation.
Pardon?
I'll wait.
Judith, let Judith speak first, if I may.
Okay, okay.
I just want to point out, there are two parking lots that are likely to be used. One is the Rock City Lot, which would involve people walking possibly in the street. The other is Mountain View, and there is a bridge there. And I would suggest signage, if we can figure out a way to have signage be allowed by the town rules, that indicates that the parking is this area where I'm moving the little hand around, because if people come through town on two twelve, they're likely to go in here. And then there is a problem with risk of people walking on that side of the road.
Well, we definitely put any signage that we can that improves the flow of traffic. You know, as, as best possible. I mean, you're right, I think they're kind of be coming from both parking lots. If you walk down there, though, there's a pretty clear crosswalk there where you cross the road right at that entrance, and that leads right to the entrance of the, there you see it. It leads right to the entrance of the building.
Right, good.
So that, that crosswalk was just built and approved by the state to put that in, so. Okay, are there any?
Ricky Filer.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Regarding, regarding that area alongside the building, along Rock City Road, where the guardrail is, where there was, there was once, I believe, a sidewalk there. That is an existing condition, true, but I watch people all the time walking in the road to get from the parking lot side, or let's say the cinema, the Woodstock Cinema side to the other side, they don't, they don't cross the road. They'll, they'll walk in the road and they do that all the time. And it looks to me like it could be an accident waiting to happen. It doesn't look safe. The other, the other point I want to make out is, in the environmental review, you indicated that there was no public transportation there, but there really is. There's about five hundred feet towards the center of town. There's a drop-off and a pickup site for public transportation. That's it.
Oh, right around here, isn't it?
Pardon?
I think it's in front of the garden, Judith.
Near the what?
It's in front of Yum.
It's from Yum Yum.
Yes, and then on the other side of the street too. There's a pickup there and a drop-off on the other side in front of Yum Yum. But there is public transportation.
Okay, so noted. Are there any other members of the public that have questions regarding this application? And Melissa, did you get any letters or phone calls?
Nope, just the ones that you guys got and that we just addressed. That's it.
Okay, well, there's no other questions from the public. I'll make a motion. I hear an entertainment. Okay, well, there's no other questions from the public, I'll make a motion, I hear an entertaining motion to close the public hearing and then turn it over to the board.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public meeting is closed now, are there board members have any uh questions that they would like to discuss about it?
So ju- just uh going back to the, the drainage thing, it's um, you know, we're talking about this new lab and I'm just wondering um. Could, I'm ha- I'm having a little bit of a awkward time because uh, I for some reason can't get your plan to rotate. So right now, uh, north is oriented uh, in a very different direction, but uh, I guess what I'm asking is. Uh, you know, for the unroofed area, is the slab is not gonna have a roof over it, correct?
It, slab will have a roof over it.
Okay, and is that, and it, and it, but it's not there now, my question is, for any new runoff areas, have you guys explored? And found it not necessary to use uh, rain gardens or anything like that? Is there no room for it?
Well, I mean, most, most of the structure, the roofs on the main structure are just let out on site, right? The rest of the building, there's a lot of roof. So it's, that's kind of an existing condition, but the roof over the pavilion, which is a slab on grade. Um, we're, of course, we're directing those into gutters, but we're planning on taking care of those, you know, on site.
Okay, I mean, I was just curious, because I see this space uh between the slab and what looks like uh, the area. I, I imagine these are representative of trees or?
Those are, that's just a, yeah, right, those are existing trees there, and that's kind of like the existing. Tree line, that line that's drawn there is kind of where the trees start. Uh, because that used to be a parking lot, you know, gravel parking lot. So that's a new slab on grade with a, a, a kind of an offset gable roof over it, so some water gets pushed back towards the building and some to the front, right?
Right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board? If not, we have later on the agenda uh to go over the resolution, which we can do.
You just have to approve the application pending the draft resolution.
Okay, uh, can I hear a motion to approve this resolution, of the application pending the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, guys.
Okay, alright, uh, just one note I want to make for everybody or for the owners. It might be of interest, uh, uh, Tales from the Seahorse.
Ah.
If you've all seen it, read it, it's a great book about the history of the Seahorse, which is the building you guys are about ready to turn into.
Definitely get a hold of that, how do we get a copy?
Um, I got it off of, I think, the internet.
I'll get my store, I can get to a copy.
But it's a fantastic story about the town of, of Woodstock during those days. And all about uh the Seahorse, which is the building you're gonna be in.
Wow, amazing.
Okay, folks.
I can get to a copy of it.
That's great, we would love it.
Okay, uh, it is seven thirty or seven thirty-five, uh, and our, we have now a sketch plan review. Which is uh, Nicole Collagen, and it's planning board number twenty dash one two two four. And this is a sketch plan review for a subdivision application of a sixty-eight point fifty-three acre lot. Into two parcels of six acres and sixty-two point five acres. In the R five zoning district located at four oh four Radcliffe Drive in Woodstock. And is represented by William Eggers from Edinburgh and Eggers. So just for the planning board to know, I guess Judy will get a chance to put it up, but uh. This is on the side of uh, Overlook Mountain along the uh, the West Sargades uh, road. And it's up on to- as it says, it's up on top of the Ray Cliff Drive, which goes near the top. So, um, with, is, is William present?
Heather, Heather, yep.
Okay. You please tell the board uh, what it is that you are applying to do.
Um, Mr. Collagian would like, this parcel used to be two parcels, but he had merged them together for tax purposes. Um, not Collagian, but the prior owner, back in the day, and he would like to. Break them into two lots again and realign the lot lines. Um, so that the existing building area where there was a house and a septic and a well. That would be its own six acre lot, and then the remaining lands would be the other lot. So there would, the, and the large remaining lands would have access via uh, West Sargades Road, which is not much of an access. The real access would be along the Hidden Valley Road.
Oh, I see, right. Right here.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I didn't turn on this, this uh photographic, I could, but I forgot.
There's not much to see other than trees.
Yep, but it clearly goes right to the property.
Yes, there's a deeded right of way, it's on the filed maps, um, and that would be the access one would use as opposed to the flag onto West Sargades.
Okay, so before I uh turn it over to other board members to ask, I just have uh two questions. Obviously, as you said, that there is presently no buildings on either lot, although there was a building site. That has septic and water and electric and a driveway access.
Yes.
Okay, and the, the next lot that is being made. Um, does, we need to have a board of health approval for a septic system on that lot to prove that it's a buildable lot?
Now, there are sixty-two point five acres there, would a feasibility letter just from an engineer saying that. The site could sustain a septic be, be admissible here, or do we actually need to go through the whole permitting process for a septic system?
Yeah, we have to prove that it's a buildable lot, we can't create a lot that it could not be, that might not be buildable. So the standard is to get board of health approval for a proposed septic system. And we have to know that there is an accessible road to access a building site.
If I can just interject, again, it's a sixty acre lot for us to decide that this is where the septic system would be, whereas a homeowner may want to. Put their house somewhere else, I mean, to, the septic system is thousands of.
I understand that, I understand that, it's a very valid point, and everybody brings it up, but that's the code. Um, I understand that, that, and we do it all the time, that um. That you might pick a spot to do your perk tests in your test pits and get board of health approval. And a new owner may decide they don't want to be there at all, but we have to prove the lot is buildable. With an approved septic system engineered and has access. We have to do if it's flat on the, if it's in the middle of a field in the valley, but this is on the side of a mountain. And um, there have been lots on side of mountains that you can't, you can't develop, so we, we have to make sure that's a developable lot.
I, I, I do under- understand that, but the, the end of Hidden Valley Road, that, there is a plateau of about ten acres there, where. I guess I'm concerned, because if we're gonna have to go through the motions of getting a permitted system. That's gonna be months, we're in the middle of a pandemic, the health department is not making septic systems a priority. And what we thought was gonna be a simple lot line adjustment is now turned into a subdivision application, and now we're having to get septic approval and. Yeah.
And that was the other question, I see on the, on the plat that there's uh lot lines to be uh deleted, so. Uh, this is not just a subdivision, but it's also a lot line deletion, correct?
No, well, the, this was, this is based off of the existing filed maps that are for the parcel, so that's where the sticky wicket is in this, is that. The, the county has merged the parcels together, but there's been no formal planning board action and a new subdivision map. Um, submitted that merged these lots together, so we're working off of the old filed maps where there were two lots. So technically, we're just rearranging the lot lines, we're not creating a new lot. It already was two lots for this sixty-eight acres. So we're. We're a little stuck here, and um, it seems like.
Yes, that's a point, because if it was.
To make this.
It was two, if it was two lots of record, that would be different than if you're creating a new lot of record.
Right, so of record, I guess, is the question, um.
When Peter and I talked a little bit about this, um, I had went back and forth with, Heather and I, um. With the assessor's office and the zoning, and basically, Peter is, back me up, subdivision, if it's one parcel. To make two, we subdivide. Ulster County Parcel Viewer acknowledges as one parcel, so it has to be a subdivision. It can't be a lot line revision, despite the history.
Right, but the filed map for this parcel shows it as two, so there is no filed map that shows it as one lot, so we're stuck as to. What is it that we're revising?
Well, if the county shows it as one lot, then that's, that's the county records, it, it just hasn't been uh corrected or changed.
So would we have to submit a filed map that merges them together and then takes them apart? Yeah, a- again, you know, you get what I'm, I'm putting down here, is that, I'm not sure what we're revising.
Alright, let me get back to the first, is John Lavelle with us right now? John? No. Okay, alright, um.
He was there.
I know, um, so. The question, the point simply is that we, the town cannot create a, a lot without proving it's a buildable lot, that's in our code.
Right.
So, to be a buildable lot, it has to have an approved septic and a. Um, access that is, that would meet town driveway standards. To create a lot. And it, it, at this point, we're creating a lot.
I understand that, um.
So if you, and the county's showing it as one lot. Um, and I see your map shows the, the dotted lines for lot, you know, for a, a lot line deletion. But it apparently has not been filed with the county.
The, yes, the, the merging of the parcels has never been filed with the county.
So at this point, the county shows it as one lot, which we are subdividing.
But you know what I'm saying, there is, there is no map other than what we're looking at on the G I S system that says it's one lot. There's no filed instrument that demonstrates that this is one lot. So again, I'm not sure what it is we are revising, if there is no map that shows that it's merged.
Well, um.
And I don't want to be difficult here, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just about process, like, what is it that we need to do to make this happen, you know?
Well, you have to get from the county. Either um, that they have something that they have not incorporated into their map. Or the county is showing it and counts it as one lot.
Heather, have you spoken with the county?
Yes, we have, I mean, there's the tax mapping that shows that it's one lot. But again, there's no filed map that shows that there was. A revision to the filed map for the subdivision that showed it as two lots, two buildable lots. So I'm, I'm in this weird quandary where. Again, there's no map, so do I need to file a map that shows it's one lot and then try to subdivide it again? Or can we just go back to the fact that it actually was two lots, and the county merged it together for tax purpose, purposes, but it was never. A planning board action that move, that merged these lots together.
Well, that happens, the county does do that, and, and now the county's saying it's one lot, and now we're going to make a subdivision. If you would like to take time to review that with the county, um, that's fine. But that's what the county's showing it as one lot.
And.
Peter?
Yep, go ahead.
This is Stuart, I, I know in our file, there's a memo from uh, the Z E O. Talking about this application is involving a subdivision, but she, she. Says there are already lots thirty-four and thirty-five on the subdivision, and she calls them fake numbers or reference points. And what she's proposed, what's, she says is the applicant is proposing to separate. A single lot, which is called fifty-one point one hundred. But then she says these lots, plural, so it's, it's rather confusing, I'm curious what was the conversation with the building department? At the, at the first, at the first uh, visit, and how did this get to be framed as a subdivision rather than um, moving lot lines uh on.
That was, was me. It's classified as one parcel through Ulster County Parcel Viewer. If it had two numbers, it would be a lot line revision, it has one S B L number.
But I noticed that it says.
CEO and the assessor's office.
And you also notice that in the subdivision, there are two lots with those numbers separate from that lot. So, um. You know, the, it, to the south, to the south of that lot are lot thirty-four and thirty-five in the subdivision. So, um, so basically, um. In order to us to make a subdivision to create a new lot, we have to prove it's a, a buildable lot. Which would require septic approval and access.
And a feasibility la- a letter from an engineer saying that on this sixty lot, that sixty acre lot, sixty-two point five acre lot. It can be buildable, you, you're requiring an actual design system. I just want to be clear, when I tell the client, it's gonna be another seven thousand dollars to do this, that, that isn't what you're asking.
That's what the code says, that's, that's the code.
Uh, that's, I, I mean, I've, I've been in front of many towns where a feasibility letter from an engineer will suffice for lots that are five acres or larger. So that's why I'm asking.
Well, what, what happens is the engineer sends that to the county, and the county, if they approve the engineering, then they, then they give a approval for septic. And it's, you know, a little more complicated now, because you have to have not only a septic but a reserve. And it has to be topowed, in other words, you have to do topography of that area for the county.
So you're talking, uh, well, you're saying when you go to the, and other to get, to get the subdivision approval, usually a feasibility letter is fine, and then when. The applicant, when the owner of the lot goes to build on the lot, then they go and get their septic approval and the topow is required and all of that, but.
Well, let me be as clear as I can, um, I work for a survey engineering firm, and we do this every single day in this town and in the whole county. Whenever there's a new lot, we have to do our perk tests, our test fits, our engineering, and get county approval. For every lot created in this county.
Now, when you say get septic, you're saying a fully designed septic system, that's what you're requesting.
Correct.
Alright, I'll bring that back to the.
May I be heard on this application, please?
Excuse me?
May I be heard on this application, please?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
This was originally three lots.
Do you identify yourself, please?
My name is Paul Freeman, I'm an attorney who represents the applicant.
Thank you.
And this was originally three lots. Clearly, the planning board previously felt that it was adequate to have septic on these, or they wouldn't have created the three lots. The fact that the county assessor decided to merge these lots doesn't change the fact that previously they were three lots. So this has already been reviewed, examined, and accepted by the planning board in the past, when the original development was set up.
And Mr. Freeman, do you know when that was?
Uh, I can look to see when the original development was, um.
I know in ninety-eight, it was two lots.
And that's my point. You can't apply those rules now.
I mean, if it was three lots, the county would have three separate S B Ls, and there's one S B L on this property.
Yeah, there is now, but that isn't because my client decided that, that's because on their own, the assessor just merged them.
Well, I don't know, the assessor did, perhaps the county did.
Or the county.
Well, then you'd.
But it, but either way, there were three lots in the past that were approved, building lots.
You'd have to take that up with the county, and if the county wants to make it two or three lots. You'd have to take that up with the county and if the county wants to make it two or three lots.
As far as the Town of Woodstock Planning Board Office goes, there's no other file regarding this parcel in the office because I always check that. So anything that had happened was not done by the planning board.
You could talk to the county and you could facilitate this change and show us documentation. We'll gladly support you. But as it stands now.
The subdivision maps were in nineteen ninety. That's when the map was filed for these lots in nineteen ninety.
Approved. It was never approved by the county.
They were filed maps. They were, they were filed.
They weren't. If, if it was filed by the county, it would have a filed county number.
Oh, what? This was an approved subdivision. It was, it was conveyed as separate lots. I'm looking at the legal description right now of the parcel. And they're conveyed by separate lot numbers.
Exactly.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and then other lands.
Okay, sir, but who approved the subdivision?
Presumably the Town of Woodstock Planning Board in nineteen ninety-six, actually.
Can you prove that?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I can't share my screen, I don't believe. But I am looking right now at the title report.
I'm talking about planning board records. Can, can you show us a planning board record that shows that?
I can show you the ninety-eight filed map. I have that on the computer.
Is the public, can the public be heard yet on this?
This is not a public hearing. So.
I just want you to know that these parcels are part of the Ray Cliff Housing Association, which are on private roads. And and the, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Ray Cliff Housing Association. So Ray Cliff Drive and Hidden Valley Drive are a road. Go to the parcels owned by Kalujian. And we have an interest in how he wants to combine, if he does, his three lots in this private community with his sixty acres, which are outside of the community. What we are concerned about is that he subdivides his sixty acres and then allows people to go up our private road, Ray Cliff Drive and Hidden Valley Road to the sixty acre subdivision that he's trying to create. And those sixty acres are not part of Ray Cliff or the Ray Cliff Housing Association. So I don't know if you're deciding issues that relate to that or are relevant to that. But I just want to make sure that that's on the table and the board, the planning board understands that that is a background issue here.
Can you identify yourself, please?
I'm Gary Bennett. I live at two Ray Cliff Drive, where there's two other members, I believe, on the Board of Directors on this meeting. Yeah.
Okay, so that is not a town road, you were saying?
Ray Cliff Drive and Hidden Valley Trail are not town roads. And they lead to lots that are owned by Mr. Kalujian that are part of Ray Cliff Drive or the Ray Cliff Community. And so this yellow, this thing that's up on the screen right now is misleading. This may be property that is owned by Mr. Kalujian, but that Hidden Valley Trail you see ends within his yellow line. But that's actually part of Ray Cliff. It's not, you know, it's not really part of what is, has been set up as the housing association. So that, that yellow line is what Nigel owns or Nagal owns. It has nothing to do with Ray Cliff, except for the three lots that he did own, thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six, which I guess have been combined at some point or not combined.
That, that further supports the exact argument I'm making, which is somebody put all of these together and they're not supposed to be all together.
Well, they can be, so I don't know if the board or people in Ray Cliff has an issue with the subdividing these back up into three separate lots. That, that might be fine with all of us. What we're concerned about is that the private roads are used to access a subdivision on those sixty acres. He's going to have to go down the to access his sixty acres, he's going to have to go down that long skinny flag strip of land that goes down to West Sogardes Road. Right there. Not up Hidden Valley or Ray Cliff Drive.
If I can be heard on this for a minute, if I can be heard on this, this is not a public hearing.
So I guess the comment that it's not a public hearing means that there's no point in me or it's not relevant for me to comment on this. The board doesn't need to know that? This issue?
It's irrelevant right now.
At this stage, there, now, I mean, you know, this is stuff that we, of course, you're welcome to come and say at the public hearing. And obviously, all concerns of the public are going to be heard by us.
I agree. And Mr. Freeman, please don't dictate to the board what how our meeting should be run and how we should hear things and what we shouldn't hear.
Yeah, it's not inappropriate for you to express these things. But as you can see, they do have other obstacles in front of them that could prevent them from getting to a public hearing. So once the, you know, I would say definitely stay tuned and, and please, you know, feel free to keep an ear to the ground and keep your other board members apprised if they want to, you know, know what's going on and follow what's happening.
Okay, let me just suggest that what you really need to have done at this point for the satisfy the planning board is to get a title search. And a title search will tell us what the situation there is.
I have a title report already. We've already done the title search.
And it says there's three lots?
Yeah. When this deed was conveyed, it was conveyed by three separate lots. The Schedule A from the title report expressly says that today.
All right, no, wait a minute. There's a difference between having three deeds and having three lots. You can have three deeds on one lot. The county is saying this is one lot.
Again, there's no instrument that, that demonstrates that, though. There's no map. There's no deed that merges all those descriptions. It's, it's these three separate parcels.
Okay, but the problem we have is that the Woodstock Planning Board did not create a subdivision there. One, two, the county shows it as one lot.
This is the Ray Cliff subdivision. What do you mean? I'm looking at a filed map that-
What? If it was filed with the county?
I, I have it on my screen. If you'd like me to bring it up.
Sure, show me where it's filed with the county.
Just a moment. I'll let you, I'll get off here.
Okay.
There, there isn't a sixty-five acre lot as part of Ray Cliff Owners Association.
Who's just speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry. Evan Hines, I'm treasurer of the Ray Cliff homeowners association.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there is a question of whether the-
There's a lot of fact twos that's owed by the owner of it.
Go ahead, Judy. I'm sorry.
I think there is a question of whether the subdivisions, as they existed in, in law and the homeowners association are identical things. We don't have that information.
I, I have the filed map up on my, on my screen right now that shows it as two lots, thirty-five.
No, but I want to see the filed map number.
Am I actually shared?
It says share screen.
And then you have to click on the little button, the little blue button on the lower right that says share.
Oh, and share. There we go.
And while you're doing that, I see John has joined us and I like John's input on this because we've run across these things before. John, what do you read about this? I saw on there a minute ago.
Yeah, he was.
Maybe, is he muted?
Okay. Well, I see a filed map number.
And then if you look at the down.
For the sixty-two acre lot.
That's lot thirty-four and then adjacent to that is lot thirty-five.
Exactly.
Which is a separate lot.
Which we're looking to delete, delete those lot lines and rearrange them. So this is a map that I thought I was revising because this is the most recent filed map for this parcel. But I have fallen into the little braya tar pit in, in trying to do this.
Okay, so you, where the house was existing, you want to make a six acre lot there. So you're going to put a new lot line. You're going to create a new lot, a six acre lot.
Right, they have, they have access.
Right.
And then the new lot would incorporate, incorporate lot thirty-five as shown on this filed map on my screen. Where there is Hidden Valley Road is a right of way all the way through that lot and would give access.
Stuart? Still, Stuart?
Yes, I'm here. I was muted.
Stuart, I think I need your opinion on this, where we go from here.
Well, I'm not going to offer a legal opinion on this. My sense of it is that it might be most expeditious if the applicant. Is the applicant represented by Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, if the applicant might provide us the title search that the chairman requested together with a brief submission, providing his reasons why we should not, why we should proceed differently than Peter has outlined. In other words, why we would not have to require them to show that it's a buildable lot. And then we might need to have our planning board attorney review it. Because I think we're in an area where there, we're being called upon to make legal judgments here. And frankly, that's why we have a planning board attorney. Because we could spend the next two hours kicking this back and forth and not really get it resolved. So my thought would be to have some kind of short duration process where Mr. Freeman and the applicant could provide us the documents that they say justify departing from, you know, the septic approval and the other things that the chairman has outlined, which might permit us to go in a different way. Otherwise, I think we have to stay with that process. That's, that's my thought about it.
Is there any value to bringing the county in on this? Referring their argument to, to the, to the county and have them make comment?
Absolutely. I know it's complicated with the COVID because you used to be able to go up to the real property in the county and, and get an answer. But I think what Stuart has suggested is correct because this is getting legal and we are not in a position to solve legal issues. I do see the applicant's quandary. I do see, it looks like a filed map. And I do not understand why the county is showing it differently. There seems to be a question of how a subdivision got done without planning board approval. I also, I understand that the Ray Cliff group has issues about the access. So there seems to be more issues than we can solve at this moment.
Peter?
Yes.
There is one little bit of information. It's a very, you know, it's a very non-informative one. On the attribute table for this lot, the big lot, it says incomplete in the narrative. There's usually nothing in narratives, but there is on this one. It says incomplete. So whatever that means.
Well, I agree with Stuart and Connor that we need input from the county. And I believe that we need input from our town attorney.
In the planning board attorney.
I mean, the planning board.
So would it be appropriate then to request the same information you've requested from the applicant? You send us a narrative and a sort of argument for why we should, you know, escape our normal process. We can send that to the county for comment. Whatever they send back to us, if it gets a little more complicated, then we start, then we'll tap the attorney.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, we do have other cases scheduled here. So I think that's what we need to do. Melissa, can you send a notice to all those that need notice about the next move?
Yes, Heather, Heather's here, right?
Yes, I am. Let me stop sharing my screen.
Okay, so we, we're, we're right now, we need more information, possibly that title search, maybe information from the county. That map that you have, maybe you could get us that, compile something for us. We would?
All right.
Okay, right?
Mr. Freeman, we'll work together on that.
Okay, thank you very much, folks. Sorry it's so complicated. I do see the complication. I do see everybody's point.
Well, I think I can hear John now. Hey, John.
I'm back. The Spectrum truck is in my driveway. That's been in and out again, internet all night.
All right, John. Well, anyway, we, we had an issue with this property up on Ray Cliff where the county is showing it as one lot. And the applicant's saying that it's two lots. And they're creating a new lot and we're asking for septic approval and access.
I heard all this.
Oh, okay.
I could hear it, but I couldn't respond to it.
Okay, so do you agree with our, our action to take?
I certainly do. Now, the interesting part is that one representative from the applicant is saying it's two lots and the other one is saying it's three lots.
Well, there was three lots originally, then they merged two of the lots into one. So the most recent filed map shows it as two lots.
Now, while certainly everything's possible, I have never seen the county reduce the number of lots, never.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that happens.
So I have no idea how that would have occurred.
I think it was done for tax purposes by-
No, well, they don't make that judgment. You would have to apply.
Yeah.
I mean, I myself took a parcel that was three lots and combined it into one for tax purposes.
Right.
Years ago, and that's the way it remains. But I've never seen them do that on their own.
But was that done, did you need to get planning board approval? I realize, I'm sorry. We can stop talking about this now. You have other things to do.
I understand, and I did indeed have to get planning board approval in order to combine the three lots.
Okay, yeah, this, this didn't have planning board approval, so.
Okay, well, let's leave it there because we do have other cases that we have to attend to. Melissa will send out the information to everybody and hopefully we'll sort it out.
Let me know.
Think we need to get Paul, Perry Mason and Paul Drake on this.
Okay, folks, we now have a little late for our seven thirty sketch plan review, but this is a sketch plan review from Brett and Jessica Irkman, specially use permit twenty-one dash oh five eighty-one, and it's a sketch plan review for specially use permit application for construction of two buildings and other projects renovations in the R five scenic overlay zoning district located at three eight seven Jim's Road in Mount Tremper. And it's represented by Grayton Yearlick. So if you would like to tell the board exactly what it is you're proposing to do.
Yes, hi, how are you? We, it's, the description's a little misleading. We're proposing one building, which is a barn, fifty by thirty square feet, fifty feet by thirty feet, fifteen hundred square feet of area. And in addition to the existing house, the addition is about fifteen hundred square feet too. And it's, you can see it here. The, the addition and the barn are both behind the, the existing house. You can see as you blow it up, you can see that there's a, a large open space that's existing. And then the house, the, the extension is in the back of the house facing north. And then the barn is proposed to be near the driveway on the approach to the house, also in the woods. So that's, that's the extent of, and then we'll, we'll be doing some minor renovations to the interior. Ellen at the Building Department, I believe, sent a letter saying this, she believes this qualifies as a, a project for a waiver. And so we're here to see if you agree.
Well, the code says anything over three- Well, the code says anything over three hundred square feet requires a special use permit. And I can clearly see we're over three hundred square feet. Um, the next step would be to uh. Assign site uh representatives from the planning board. To look at the site and your proposed uh construction drawings. So um. We can't waver it because it's well over three hundred square feet. Um, and uh, Connor, are you with us here?
I am.
So is, this is in the scenic overlay. Is this something that you would be a site rep on?
Um, I, I, I could, I could probably make that happen. I'm, I'm looking at it now and I think um. Especially consider, if I am, if I'm understanding the application correct, considering the scale of it.
What's you up to?
It might be a good, another good.
Listening. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, I, I, it might be another good uh application to, to uh request every photograph.
Excuse me, would you folks mute your, uh, what you're getting? Too many people talking. Connor's trying to explain something. Go ahead, Connor.
Hey, John?
So um. Uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to address the applicant right now. Um, basically, um. If, as I look at your site plan and all the new construction that's happening, one of the, as you can imagine, big concerns for us. Um, here in the planning board is preserving the scenic integrity of our uh natural landscape. Uh, so when you go to do a big renovation or expansion like this, it's important for us to really get a good idea of the area of disturbance. And particularly how that pertains uh to the outward facing tree canopy. A lot of the houses here, uh. If they were not screened by trees, would be visible from hiking trails and even certain parts of town. And we want to prevent that as much as possible. Uh, so. Um, so I had, so what we're doing these days is we're requesting that you hire a drone photographer. There are several in the area, uh, and a couple I could personally recommend. It's very. It's very quick work, um, and they come. And basically it'll look like what you're seeing here, but it'll be a current photograph. And it'll give us a ver, and, and simply uh by delineating uh the. Area and the direction of the canopy as it pertains to a uh perimeter of your area of disturbance. We can give you very specific guidance on things like uh. You know, what trees can and can't be removed. That's just going forward in general. And whether or not, you know, you need to put in others uh special man, construction management practices. So um. If I, uh, if you'd like, I could definitely recommend someone to you who I know is very good and inexpensive. Um, but that, that combined with a, a site visit, which wouldn't cost you anything for me, uh, would be. Uh, the extent of what we would go in and look to come out with.
Just want to add on, on the photo, if you get the drone photo, what we're asking for is that you delineate somehow. What you propose is the area of disturbance.
Yes, sure.
Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, like, uh, uh, if I may, if I may, we, we have received a, a photograph in the past that was. Way, way more zoomed out than it had to be. You, it would, I would be surprised if you had to get anywhere near four hundred feet above your property. Um, like, but the idea being, we want to see, you know, we want to see a, a good chunk of the canopy that faces outward. And we want to see, uh, you can give it to your, your engineer or anyone, just circle, give us a, a good id, a nice tight idea of the area of disturbance. And as long as all of that is encapsulated in the photograph, we're, we're good.
Okay. Um, no, I'll, I'll take your, your recommendation. I have one too. Uh, and when can we, when can we meet at the job site?
Um, well, uh, that depends. I'm a li, I gotta tell you, uh, weekends are the best time for me these days. I am expecting family this weekend, so I would uh, in, in that, with that in mind. Be happy to arrange something for next weekend. Uh, would you like to take my phone number now? You can send me a text and we can figure something out afterward.
Email him so it's not on camera. If you're okay with that.
Excellent with that.
Okay.
Keep me here to, for this reason.
So I don't give out all my personal information to the internet? Thank you.
You, I'll email Grayton your cell number. Is that okay?
Absolutely. And um, and you can, and I, and I know I, I offered up photos of my property as template examples. So again, if you want a recommendation on someone, I'm happy to give it to you. Uh, but if you go with your own person, uh, feel free to have a look at the photos uh that Melissa has to get an idea of what we're looking for.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a, this is a sketch plan review, a first sketch plan review. Uh, so now after the site. Plan visit by Connor and um, the um. Showing of your maps of your proposed construction and the uh. Construction drawings that Connor will be able to view. Uh, after that, uh. Melissa will schedule a second sketch plan review after we get Connor's report.
Okay, can we be on the next review?
Uh, you, you gotta get the information together and we, we have a little backlog. So it's all about scheduling. So you, you do your part and, and get the drone photography done and uh the site visit with Connor. And then as soon as I have the paperwork in my hands or via email and the planning board has seen them, I will get you on the schedule as soon as I can. But again, we have backlog of cases.
And you meet once a month?
Twice a month.
And uh, and if, if possible, um, you know, with that in mind, before we schedule. It would be great if you could have the drone photography done uh before I arrive, because then we can. We can look at it together on site and we're going to be able to attack this from uh two axes at least, so.
Sure, we'll do it next. Uh, I'll, I'll get the photography for our meeting uh next weekend.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, um, we have to move on. Uh, we have another sketch plan review. Uh, and this one is the Hellenic Orthodox Traditionalist Church of America, Inc. Special use permit number twenty one dash zero four seven nine A. It's a sketch plan review of a special use permit application. To create a single person burial site in the R five zoning district. Located at five twenty one Culbrick Road in Bearsville. And it's represented by Alexander Queen. So before um, I asked Mr. Queen to explain um. What they want to do. Let me just say that I've had some experience with uh burial sites as a surveyor. When we find them, uh, when we survey properties, we find them either in the mountains or in uh. Farmlands, we have to locate them, uh, the perimeter as best we can and put them on a map. When we create them, which we have done, we have to have the outbounds of the property. So that we can then give a meets and bounds description of the proposed or the will be the burial ground. As an example of that would be um Albert Grossman's burial site, which is on the Bears, on the Bear complex. And that is a meets and bounds description of that site, and it actually has its own SBL. The only thing I found out was that in this county or in the state. You need to have a licensed uh undertaker be present. And it's supposed to be three hundred feet from any building. So with that in mind, if Alexander's here, could you explain what it is that you would like to do? Is Alexander uh present? Uh, hello?
I can't see with the screen.
I see a Bishop Chris. Are you related to this project?
I'm here. I'm sorry, I was on mute. I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Alex?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Alex.
Hello.
Hi, Alex.
Hi, nice to see you.
Could you explain to the board uh what it is that you're proposing?
Well, it's just as the proposal says, it's a um, it's a burial site for our um retired bishop who's um. You know, um, gonna die sooner or later, probably sooner rather than later. We have a, there was a grave that was dug for him up on top of a hill where that, uh, the church was going to be built. Um, and we would like to just get an approval so that we can bury him when, when the time comes.
Okay, so Melissa did some research and found that there's no actual uh code or law regarding it. Uh, I did some research, as I said, that it showed that you need to have a licensed undertaker present.
At the burial or at, is that?
And um, it, it, it said three hundred feet from a building. The idea of having it located is of course, if anytime in the far future the property changes hands, that the site is preserved. And therefore uh properly marked on a map or a plot of the property. Um, I don't know the legal reality of that. I just know, as I said, we've done it before, uh, where we've had to survey the plot. Um, but uh, I don't know, John, uh, if he's there still, might know more about it. Uh, I think he might be dealing with uh spectrum.
He's there.
Peter?
Yes.
This is Stuart. Just, you mentioned that I have to have a, a licensed undertaker. At what point in time are you referring to? At the time that the body is put into the ground or at some other?
Yes, at the time of the burial.
Okay.
This is what I read online, so believe me, I, I don't know. It's, this is what I, research I found.
But not to define the site?
No.
No.
The actual burial.
John's here.
Hi, John.
Hello.
But uh, any input on this uh burials?
Yeah, I was involved when we buried uh Albert. And yeah, th- this all sounds right what you laid out, Peter. And uh, the thing about it is that it. If they intend to bury more. Make it bigger now.
Were you saying to reapply for a lot, uh, for more than a single burial? Is that what you're saying?
Well, make the.
If you plan on utilizing the property that way in the future, yeah.
Oh, there's a lot, there's a lot of room there. What, what, what we wanted to do was, you know, you know, frankly. We don't know how, how, how long he, he's, you know, he's going to stay alive. We, we want to have, you know, he wants to be buried there. So we want to just expedite that. Um, if.
Yeah, fine, but I don't think you're going to have any difference in the time between making the lot. A little bigger than for one person.
Okay, okay, that, that makes sense. Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
You know, do it so that it's, you know, big enough for six or ten, whatever you want to do. It's not going to really matter because once you've defined it and you've outlined it and it's been surveyed, as Peter said earlier, you're done.
Yeah, I want to be buried there too.
Yes.
Now, Alex.
Forward thinking.
So the point is to preserve the burial site forever. It should be surveyed so that uh it is got a legal description. And if property ever changed hands in the future, it would be preserved.
Okay, so to, to survey it, I need what exactly?
Well, I'm not saying that you have to do this. I, you know, I don't know the, the, I don't think that, as, as Melissa pointed, there is no particular law regarding it. So I don't, I'm not saying you have to, I'm, but I just, that's what we've done in the past is to um create a, a lot. For the burial site, so it's preserved.
Is that a, a lot within the lot then?
Right, a lot within the lot.
Okay, so. So I would just get a, any, any surveyor to do that or is that?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Exactly, exactly. And create that lot, that little whatever size, as John says, make it, you know, so you don't have to come back again and, and get that done and, and you're good to go.
So it sounds like what you're asking me then is to, to reapply with, for um, for a, 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 not just a single burial site, but a burial plot.
You don't have to reapply. You can just adjust your plans, right? Right, board?
Right.
Here, he's talking to us.
Make it a hundred by a hundred feet or whatever.
I don't think it was actually specified what, you know, what the dimensions were. Um, it was one, actually it was, it was one acre, so it's already there. It's just not specified where the one acre is.
Well, that's what you probably should do is to get a surveyor.
Get a surveyor for the one acre. Okay, that, that makes sense. Okay.
The only thing I want to point out here is you, you do have some wetlands. I don't know where you're planning to put it, but you.
Yeah, yes, and um. I actually, are, are the wetlands showing up on this map here, Judith?
Yeah, that blue area there should be.
Okay, no, we're fine. We're actually, we're actually above, above where the candle shop um is in the, in the field.
Is this candle shop?
Excuse me?
Is this the candle shop where I'm moving the hand?
So, yes.
Because I, you know, they did this map, this, this flyover was in twenty sixteen, and I think I was out here.
Oh, okay, okay, then I'm sorry. If you look at, th- this, this is probably where the, the uh church was going to be built. So if you look at that same area where that building is, it's actually uh. Actually, as you're looking at the map. It's a little bit to the right. No, I'm just saying goodbye. Right about, right, a little lower. Yeah, I mean, a little closer to the street, but not much.
Somewhere in here.
No, somewhere, no, not, not, uh.
Yes, yes, right there. We're the hand, a little above the hand now.
All right, bring the hand closer to the street.
Right around there, right there.
Go left about, about uh.
No, no, no.
Right, oh, you're right around there. Yes, that's the area.
But this is not a building?
No, that, that was taken down, right? All it is now is a, is the remains of a slab.
Yeah, I remember when I was out there. I didn't think there was anything there and you were going to build in that general area for the candle.
We built closer to, we built about halfway between the street and there for the candle shop.
For the candle shop, yeah, right.
So, so, okay.
So Peter, what more do we need to do on this?
Uh, well, I think the applicant will come uh, uh, get the survey done. Um, I don't know that uh. It needs planning board approval, Melissa, do you? I mean, I, I.
Well, it needs a special use permit according to our town code.
Okay, okay.
So, so basically they're here because the way the town code is wrote, um, Ellen can't approve it without a special use permit. But like you said, you and I both did some legwork, investigative work on this.
Okay, so that's where we stand. So uh, you guys can come back uh. When you've got your survey plot done and we will continue with a special use permit.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so uh, an unfinished business. Uh, we have a couple of adopting resolutions. And a discussion, and while John is still with us here.
I am.
Um, I'd like to skip down to the discussion of the potential further meetings regarding critical environmental areas. And the concept there is um, I, I did write a memo which you guys probably have read. But basically the idea is it's how, where, what? And why they would be done, what would be the criteria? What would be the restrictions and what would be the areas? And we happen to have um. Um. A, a meeting coming up with Ingrid, uh, in which she is discussing these things. So um, my first question to John is, is this something that you think? Having been, being the senior member of the board and also having been the town uh supervisor. Uh, is this something that seems uh reasonable?
Very, yeah, I think it's appropriate, Peter.
Okay, so um, as I said, uh, Ingrid is having a uh, a workshop regarding this uh. Critical environmental areas soon.
Was it March, right?
Yes, I think it was in March. Uh, so I've asked Melissa i- i- if we have some meetings coming up before our, our workshop. Uh, that we could give a few minutes to kind of review this idea. And if everybody thinks that's a good thing to follow up on, then uh, I'll ask Melissa to put it on the agenda when we have the time.
I communicated both with Ingrid and Julieable Locke and the W E C. Everybody's on board. So once we get some ideas, we could really all kind of work together too, Peter.
Okay, and I see that uh Judith has got some incredibly good uh data that uh can be um incorporated in this idea.
I was proposing, Peter, that I give the board a quick look before, maybe before Ingrid and Julia. A quick look at what the data. A quick look at what the data show.
Everything just froze.
What's that, John?
Hello?
Yep.
We hear you. If, if Peter's okay, maybe next meeting we could give Judy a little bit of time, maybe like ten minutes, Judy, does that work?
Yeah, we could just kind of fly through it really fast. You can see the kind of.
Bring into the C A, CEAs. Is that all right, Peter?
Yep. Fantastic.
It'll be our first C A, C E A discussion will be Judith on point for ten minutes.
Fantastic, fantastic. I'm glad if the board is, I'm glad the board is on board with this because it ties into, of course, uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, which suggests we, you know, follow this idea. Okay, so now back to the motions. Uh, Stuart is still with us. I'd like if he could make a motion to adopt the draft resolution for fifteen Rock City Road.
Okay, so my only thing that I'm going to tweak upon what you guys said, I did have written in there like an acknowledgement from the town engineer, but I'm, I'm going to add, um, some sort of note from Larry Allen saying he approves the plans. The future septic. So we get like follow-up from Larry Allen from our beginning. Okay?
You're, you're muted.
Can you hear me? That, that, uh, the engineering approval should be for the septic specifications and location, both of those.
Yep.
Okay, specs and location on the parcel. So, um, I would propose that the planning board move to adopt the draft resolution under, uh, case number SPR twenty dash zero three 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 A fifteen Rock City Road as discussed and proposed.
So, who? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, now I'm going to call on Melissa.
That's me.
To make some motions to adopt a bunch of S T R resolutions.
Hey, guys, we had fifteen down this week. I just live here, I feel like. S U P number nineteen zero five two three Dolores Schaper. S U P number nineteen dash zero five two four Doug and Jamie Bartel. S U P number nineteen zero five two six Noah and Talia Nierenberg. S U P nineteen dash zero five two eight Lindsay Barrett. S U P number nineteen dash zero five two nine Brett and Cassidy Nacello. S U P number nineteen dash zero five three two Maggie and Dennis O'Neil. S U P number nineteen dash five three three Marsh Meadows LLC. S U P number nineteen dash zero five three four John Skirdy. S U P number nineteen dash zero five three five Colin C B Shelley and Tanya Travers. S U P number nineteen dash zero five three six Crosby and Mercer LLC. S U P number nineteen zero five three seven Larry Beinhart and Gillian Farrell. S U P nineteen dash five zero five three eight Craig Hazen. S U P number twenty dash zero five four zero John Lamontow and Elizabeth Torthobnik. S U P number twenty dash zero five four one Lindby Dodge. S U P dash twenty, twenty dash zero five four five Catherine Spiotta, Elena Spiotta and Christine Keely. All right, guys, somebody make that motion to approve these short-term rentals.
Favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. And then someone to make a motion to approve Peter's credits.
So moved.
Oh, yes, that was understanding and applying the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and it was a really good, uh, webinar. It was quite informative. Okay, folks, well, does anybody on the board have anything else that they need to add?
I have one quick request on these bulk, uh, motions for the, at the short-term rentals. I don't want to create any more paperwork load. Is it possible, uh, to include in, in our communications where these places are? Because I don't have any addresses. I, I, I'm kind of trying to keep track of locations.
Sure, I can, um, I'll email you guys all that list. It just, it take, that, that's more paperwork, so give me a little bit of time.
Yeah, well, I don't need it now, but just going forward, suggesting that so that when we see what's coming up, we know if they're all concentrated in one area as opposed to another.
Absolutely.
I have not been mapping this, Stuart, but I could.
I'm not asking that. I just want to know where they are.
That makes sense, Stuart, absolutely. I got you and I'll, uh, I'll do the prior ones too, so you have a complete list. I also, we, we do send the continuous letter mailing, so I'm dealing with the public a lot for this. And a lot of times it's not the, the short-term renter as opposed as short-term rentals in general, so I'm very busy.
So I don't want to put a burden on you. Just, if there's any easy way to do it, somewhere along the line.
Like I said, I feel like I live here sometimes.
Well, maybe you could then keep a tickler as to what the areas are, then just give us updates every once in a while.
Absolutely, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, that's it.
Anybody else on the board have any, uh, questions, uh, or comments for this session?
Is there a spreadsheet for those?
Um, yes, but I didn't put addresses on my spreadsheet.
Got it, okay.
It's like, there's check that comes in and I get the application back. There's so much to this.
It's a can of worms, I tell you, a can of worms.
Let me, let me, let me go back to the map question for a second because it's really not hard. If I had a list of the SBLs, I could make a separate list that is just that. A separate map that is just that, that I could keep track of. It would not be hard.
Okay, so Judy, I will, I can send you easy peasy cut and paste the SBLs.
Okay.
Okay?
You know, all I, all I need to do is just find them in the attribute table.
They're wrapping it up.
I move to adjourn.
So moved, all in favor?
All stirred.
All right.
Hi, Stuart.
Everybody have a good evening and stay safe and healthy and COVID-free.
Peter, I'll see you next week.
You will.
Just give me a call.
Okay, John, if we lose each other, you give me a call.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, all have a good evening.
Stay safe.